Please take this time to silence your cellphones. For the safety of all patrons, please take a moment to locate the exit nearest to your seat. Exits can be found to the front, rear, and both sides of the auditorium. Please remember that the closest exit may not be the same doors through which you entered. In the event of an evacuation, please exit the building and move to a safe location. Follow all instructions given by event staff who will advise you when it is safe to return. Assistive listening devices are available at the control room in the rear of the auditorium. Restrooms can be found in the auditorium lobby as well as in the concourse near the main entrance. Please remember that smoking is strictly prohibited on all North Penn School District property. Thank you for joining us and enjoy the show.
Good evening, North Penn School District. My name is Alexis Bamford and I'm the editor-in-chief of The Night Crier. With me are senior editor Skylar Simpson and staff writer Simeon Barrett, and we're thrilled to welcome you to the 2019 School Board Town Hall Debate. We also welcome those watching at home on North Penn Television. Participating candidates belong to two teams, North Penn Neighbors for Progress and North Penn Views. This event was organized by the staff of The Night Crier, who selected topics of discussion, created questions, and developed a format for tonight's 90-minute debate. Rules have been agreed to by both teams, and questions have not been provided to the candidates in advance. Our questions will cover five relevant topics that are currently affecting the North Penn community. We will pose each question to a team, who will select a candidate to provide a two-minute response. The opposing team will then be allotted two minutes to answer the question. Following this, each team will be allotted one additional minute to further discuss the issue at hand. We ask that you hold your applause during the formal debate to ensure that the audience here, as well as those watching at home, can clearly understand the candidates. However, I invite you to applaud now as I introduce the candidates. On behalf of North Penn Neighbors for Progress, please welcome Julianne Ramich, Tim McBane, Kathy Wesley, and Wanda Lewis Campbell. Two candidates were unable to attend, Mr. Al Roche and Ms. Alicia G. Representing North Penn Views, please welcome Daniel Bell, Jennifer Breen, David Kreske, and Ned Smith. Two candidates were not able to join us tonight, Dr. Michelle Rup and Ms. Karen Calvinese. One more round of applause, please, for the candidates. You may now take your seats. Now, please welcome members of the North Penn Chamber Singers, who will be performing our national anthem. Thank you very much, North Penn Chamber Singers. All candidates who could not be with us this evening were given the opportunity to send an opening statement in their absence. North Penn Neighbors for Progress candidate Alicia G submitted the following statement: "My name is Alicia G, and I am an educator, a mother of three, and a current North Penn school director. I'm sorry I'm not able to join you this evening. As the mother of a North Penn senior, I have an obligation to my daughter that is preventing me from joining you this evening. I am fortunate to have three children in the district who have benefited from the amazing teachers and stellar education that North Penn has to offer. I am also an educator in a neighboring district and have devoted 22 years to public education in Abington and Hatburo Horsum School District. I'm seeking the support of my North Penn neighbors in this November's election so that I can continue the work that I started with the current board leadership over a year and a half ago, when I was appointed to my current seat. In that short year and a half, I have been an integral part of progressive accomplishments in the district, including the enactment of a 10-year facilities plan, increasing the benefits of a property tax rebate program for our community's most vulnerable citizens, bolstering social-emotional learning in our schools by expanding mental health supports to students, and I was able to cast a historic vote to implement full-day kindergarten in every North Penn elementary school, a program that will benefit incoming kindergarten students for decades to come. Thank you for your time. I commend The Night Crier students for organizing the debate and taking part in our political process." North Penn Neighbors for Progress candidate Al Roche submitted this statement: "Thank you for this opportunity to discuss my vision for the North Penn School District. As a proud, decades-long North Penn taxpayer, I continue to be involved in our community on many levels. My daughter and son-in-law graduated from North Penn High School. My grandson attends Inglewood Elementary School, and his brother will be starting kindergarten in two years. Student success, fiscal responsibility, and school safety mean everything to me. Now, as a retiree, I'm passionate about our community and North Penn schools. I will use my military experience, business management, and computer science degrees, as well as a master's degree in business administration to make our schools successful. I will advocate for good governance that serves our students and taxpayers, especially those on fixed incomes. My experience and expertise in designing, developing, and implementing computer systems and business plans for major corporations including GE Aerospace, GE Aster space, SmithKlein, Wyeth-ETNA, and Independence Blue Cross means that I understand the planning and resources needed for a district as large as North Penn, as well as the team building needed to achieve our goals. My vision for North Penn schools is based on a few simple rules that guide North Penn Neighbors for Progress's goals. One, our children must come first. They have the educational, behavioral, and emotional support they deserve to be successful. They must have. Then, this must be done in a safe, healthy, and positive environment. Every child is important. Three, we must continue to listen to every single family and person in our community. I love my community, and I want North Penn to continue going forward, not backward, and I promise you the same dedication as your elected school board director. Yours in service, Al Roche." Thank you to Ms. G and Mr. Roche. Now, each candidate will be given one minute to deliver an opening statement introducing themselves. We will begin with North Penn Neighbors for Progress and Ms. Julianne Ramich.
Hi, my name is Julianne Ramich, and I am so proud to be part of this team of six. We are the North Penn Neighbors for Progress, and we've been spending many months over the summer getting out there and meeting our neighbors. So tonight, I could rattle off my bio and tell you about myself, but instead, I'm going to introduce you to my neighbor. This is Ms. Kathy Wesley, and I really enjoyed working with her, and I look forward to seeing her and working with her on the board as well. Kathy is the first female in the role of Director of Engineering for SEPTA. She oversees their major projects, start to finish. And with that 10-year facilities plan, we want someone on the board who can review those blueprints, help us negotiate contracts, and make sure that we keep projects on target, both in terms of timeline and budget. It's such a privilege to be working with her, and I'm so proud to be her neighbor at this event tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ramich. Ms. Wesley?
First, I'll say thank you to my teammate Julianne for that introduction. Again, my name is Kathy Wesley, and I have the honor of introducing my other teammate here, the other one of one of six. This is Wanda Lewis Campbell. Wanda comes to us from a long history of higher education. Wanda was the assistant dean at Temple University for a number of years. She has over 20 years in higher education and brings that experience and skill set to this team to move forward with our school board. Wanda has lived in the school district of Montgomery Township for over 23 years. She has two children that went through the North Penn School District as well, and both have been successful post-high school. Presently, even though Wanda is retired, she didn't think that was enough, so she decided to run for school board, and again, is a viable candidate, and again, brings a lot of skills in terms of higher education to us. And on our team, we have elementary, we have middle school, high school, and the higher education piece. Presently also, Wanda is the adjunct professor at Temple in the School of Education. So I am honored again to welcome and introduce my teammate, Wanda.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Ms. Lewis Campbell?
Thank you, neighbor. Thank you, neighbor Kathy. It gives me honor and privilege to introduce my neighbor, Tim McBane. In case you don't know, Tim is a proud parent of Walton Farmers with two young children in kindergarten and first grade. He's a tireless volunteer in the community, and he was appointed in June of 2018 and now represents North Penn on the North Monaco Technical Career Center Operating Committee. And he also works on the Education Community and Policy Committee and as an advocate for North Penn in Harrisburg. What I like about Tim is that he has 16 years' experience teaching young people like yourselves. He's been teaching world history, he's a coach, he's a club sponsor, all in the upper Dublin school system. And he has taught what policy and budget modifications mean for actual student experiences in classrooms and co-curricular programs. So he knows the impact that they have on the community. Tim believes firmly in the power of quality education to open doors for students and the power of our schools to unite this spectacular community. Also, Tim's wife is a second-grade teacher, so they have a household that's certainly concerned and knowledgeable about how to work and train our students. That's my neighbor, Tim McBane.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis Campbell. Mr. McBane?
Guess who I'm going to speak about tonight? No, thank you very much, Simeon, Alexis, and Skylar, and the whole Night Crier crew. It's a wonderful event, and thank you also to the maintenance staff that got this room ready for us tonight. It's a great job. I'm going to have the pleasure of introducing my neighbor Julianne Ramich. She is a tireless worker for our community, and she will reach out to everyone in our community in numerous ways to make sure that everybody is heard. And I need my notes here because she's so qualified and accomplished, so please excuse me as I do. Julianne Ramich has two children, one at Napp Elementary and one in Pendale Middle School. She was appointed in January of 2018 to serve here on the North Penn School Board. She is on the Facilities and Operations Committee, the Finance Committee. She's a member of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit and the Joint Operating Committee of the North Monaco Technical Center with me. She's also the board liaison to the district's Wellness Committee. Professionally, she has a master's in social work from the Brown School at Washington University. She's worked in the field of nonprofit management and immigrant services for 18 years, where she has honed her skills and is uniquely qualified in the areas of grants management, budget creation and management, staff management, strategic planning, program implementation, and many other things. Is my time up already?
Yes.
I apologize. There's more to know about her, but I know that she's a good teammate and who this community needs, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Now, we'll move on to North Penn Views and Mr. Daniel Bell.
Thank you all for being here tonight. My name's Daniel Bell, and I'm a 14-year resident of the North Penn School District with three daughters attending our schools over at Walton Farm. I'm here tonight excited at the opportunity to represent our community on a board of passionate, forward-thinking leaders. I look to bring my expertise in instructional leadership as a certified teacher and principal, leading schools for over a decade, in operational excellence, having managed 27 schools across 1.5 million square feet of facilities, and in financial stewardship, having led over $250 million of school budgets annually. I'd look to bring that to our community here. I'm focused on ensuring that North Penn continues to have educational excellence for all students, matched with a model of fiscal sustainability that allows our community members of all ages and backgrounds to be able to continue to live their lives here. Our responsibility as school directors is to ensure that students, both today and for generations to come, can live and receive a great education right here in North Penn. You deserve that, my daughters deserve that, and future generations of North Penn residents deserve that. So I look forward to the opportunity to potentially serve you, our constituents, and our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you. Ms. Breen?
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Breen, and I'm a lifelong resident of the North Penn community. I moved here with my parents when I was in grade school, and my husband and I are now raising our children here as well. I look at the school board as an opportunity to serve a community in which I've lived and intend to live for the duration. I am a project manager by trade. I work in the pharmaceutical and biotech industry, and I'm used to working with vendors, contracts, large budgets, and so I've got a qualified background to sit at the table. As a project manager, communication is key. On a daily basis, I am liaising between groups, and I would hope to do that between the community, the administrators, the student body, and all the other relevant participants. And finally, my objective primarily is to keep things on time, on target, and on budget. And with that, there's six seconds left.
Thank you, Ms. Breen. Mr. David Kreske?
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Kreske, and I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's a pleasure, and I'm honored to be up here. I would like to thank The Night Criers for organizing and hosting such a great event. Second, I'd like to thank my family for the loving support during this whole process. I'd also like to thank the North Penn Neighbors for Progress team for being here for what will certainly be an informative debate on the issues that affect the community. A little bit about me and why I chose to serve my community by running for school board. I've been a lifelong resident of the North Penn area, like many of us up here on stage. Many moons ago, I walked these very same hallways, so it's just kind of like a trip down memory lane for me. I married to a wonderful woman and a proud father of two girls, an eighth grader at Penfield and a fifth grader at Walton Farm. I spent 22 years in the Navy, serving both in the active and reserve components, retiring as a Navy chief petty officer a few years ago. In my civilian life, I've been in IT for the past 21 years, working for a large hospital management company, supporting the IT needs for over 200 behavioral health hospitals around the country. It excites me that if elected, I'll be able to be a part of not just my kids' education, but the education of all the kids in the district. I feel with the many years of corporate experiences and years of military leadership, I'm more than qualified to help lead the North Penn School Board. My promise to you is that I will be the voice of reason and will work to balance educational excellence with the financial limitations of our community taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Kreske. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. As a retired member of student government at both my high school and Penn State's Abington campus, I was thrilled to receive the invitation for this evening's student-run town hall. I commend you, the students, for arranging this event, and I encourage you to remain engaged in the future. A little bit about me, to save some confusion. Legally, I'm Edward, but everyone knows me as Ned with an N, N-E-D, Smith. I'm the father of a son, Justin, and the grandfather of his son, Jackson. I'm the son of a senior. My mother is living in the home that she and my father purchased together and is facing the challenges of living on a fixed income. Career-wise, I'm a human resources professional, having spent 15 years focused on employee pay issues, who took a career side trip to work for State Representative Bob Gotchall. So I've had countless opportunities to work with school boards and staff and to be a part of discussions about education in Harrisburg. I've also met with many seniors beyond my mother, and I understand the pain of having to pay increasing property taxes on fixed incomes. And again, thank you for sponsoring this event.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Thank you. For tonight's town hall, each question will be preceded by a statement delivered by a Night Crier staff member, which will give the audience background information on the issue being discussed. Following that information, a question will be posed. The first response to each question will alternate between the two teams. Each team will be given two minutes to respond to the question and an additional one minute for a follow-up or rebuttal. Now, I'll turn it over to Skylar Simpson.
Thank you. Our first question tonight will be posed to North Penn Views as determined by a coin flip backstage. Following North Penn Views, North Penn Neighbors for Progress will have two minutes to answer the same question. And now, for our first topic, please welcome sports editor Prasham Jobinputra, who will discuss the issue of facilities.
Good evening. North Penn is the fifth-largest school district in the state of Pennsylvania, housing over 12,000 students, teachers, and administrators in its 20 buildings. Facility updates are needed throughout the North Penn School District. The high school, which holds over 3,000 students, is in need of a new boiler system, and Crawford Stadium is set to be renovated next summer. The renovation of Napp Elementary is steadily progressing, as are discussions about the prospect of adding the ninth-grade center, and therefore, 1,000 more students to the high school. Adding air conditioning to Penbrook and Penfield is also a key issue. And as Pendale ages, its future may be determined by the potential movement of ninth-grade to the high school property. To complete these projects, fiscal planning as well as long-range strategic planning are essential. For our questions on facilities and renovations, we turn it back over to our moderators.
Thank you, Prasham. And now, our first question. With the Crawford Stadium plan and the Napp project already in motion, and a 10-year facilities plan in place, what do you see as the best way to carry out this plan going forward? And what do you see as the most essential needs included in our district's plan to upgrade buildings and facilities? North Penn Views, you have two minutes to respond.
Thank you very much. There is a tremendous responsibility as a board to ensure that facilities are a great place for our students, our staff, to thrive on a daily basis. I've run facilities for over a decade, and the reality is facilities require constant, premeditated maintenance and need to be given enough financial flexibility to respond to all the different emergency situations that we know pop up on a daily basis. The leadership of the board, some of whom are sitting right over there, have done a really strong job while Scott Kennedy was here, spending time identifying key issues and costs to start trying to prioritize the work that needs to be done. However, it's critical that all the stakeholders and all of the different constituents share the viewpoint on that prioritization. When I was running schools, the methodology to focus on that prioritization was really fixated on several things. First and foremost, life safety and student health and access. And so prioritizing things that were going to deal with that most immediately. Things like abatement, things like student access through ADA compliance, and things like ensuring that students are able to go to school because of the temperatures being well-maintained. Next pieces were really focusing on high-expense-reducing preventative maintenance, ensuring that we're not just waiting for our parking lots to crack, but doing the preventative maintenance that changed that from a $400,000 project to a $20,000 project. Next priority is focusing on facility improvements that drive academic outcomes, whether that is the new STEM lab to match with the curriculums or different opportunities along those lines, and then the facility enhancements that are desired. And so, the reality is if we simply open the coffers to all projects, we're going to find ourselves in a spot where we're not in a place to be able to fix anything that is an emergent emergency that happens all the time, whether that's roof leaks or lacking heat. We can't spend on facilities to the point of being house poor and unable to take care of the things that we actually need to drive student outcomes, like our teachers and our staff. But we also can't continue to tax our community members and seniors so that they're actually house poor and can no longer live in our district.
Thank you, Mr. Bell?
Thank you. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have two minutes to respond.
Great. Second only to our school personnel, our greatest asset in this district is our facilities, and we must treat them that way. And for so long, many of our buildings and our stadium and other things haven't been cared for in the way that they have. So you might think, when Tim introduced me, he let you all know that my background is in social work, and you might think, why is a member a social worker on a facilities team? Well, that project and that idea of being part of that creation of that 10-year plan and having that social work lens was making sure that we put students first. And in that 10-year prioritization of that plan that we push forward, that I'm so proud to be part of, we prioritized projects that are going to limit education access. So if a boiler broke, we'd have kids out of school. That is a priority. So we're looking at all of those things and beginning to plan, and for the first time in many years, we actually voted as a school board to put money into renovations and maintenance of those projects so that we have money should something break on that list. And we're monitoring and tracking that constantly. I want to talk a little bit, we mentioned the ADA compliant and looking at things that are necessary. Crawford Stadium is not ADA compliant, nor is it a stadium that meets the needs of all children. Right now, it is a football stadium. That means girls that want to play field hockey or want to play lacrosse don't have a place to play. The stadium isn't for them. So the stadium needs to be a place and a project where it can be student-centered, where everyone can have a place. And meanwhile, too, schools like Napp, having that social work lens, I'm able to look at that. The cafeteria at Napp, it's not a trauma-informed space. So in that new design, let's give kids a place in a cafeteria that can be used for STEM breakout activities and things when it's not being used as a lunchroom, in a place that isn't going to re-traumatize or injure or harm children. So really looking at our facilities in a way that is cost-efficient, prioritizing putting children at the center, and creating a 10-year plan gives us the ability to be able to prioritize costs and make sure that we're not placing the burden on our community. Likewise... Thank you.
Thank you. North Penn Views, you have one additional minute for a response.
To add what Dan said, with all the projects that they're looking to do, with the upgrade of the high school, with moving the ninth grade up here at Napp School, as well as the stadium. I love all the ideas. They're great. But doing it all at one time with increasing taxes for a lot of our people in our community might be a little bit too much for them. I think we need to be good stewards of our money and prioritize which of these are the most important, taking into account student education is really why we're here. What we're trying to do most is educate our students. I don't feel that all these topics, all these different things that are going on right now need to be done right at this moment. I think we just need to prioritize and be more mindful of the spend.
Thank you. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have one additional minute for a response.
Hi, so I'd like to say that while it is a multifaceted approach, and Julianne and my team addressed the student piece of it, from the financial side of it, the subsidies that are due from Harrisburg have been on hold for an extended period of time. But to address what we can control and influence here going forward with the 10-year plan, you need to look at the prioritization of which facilities are in need of care. I mean, what have you been correcting repeatedly? Therefore, you want to stop that because that's additional cost burdens. The other pieces, you can look at this in a holistic way in terms of the synergies that you might get. Maybe you want to do all the HVAC for certain buildings at the same time. So there's synergies to be realized that you'll receive. There's also the type of, I'll call, requests for proposals. We can get really smart about how we write them so that the school district bears very little or no risk, financial risk, schedule risk. The other piece is get really smart with writing your contracts. And at SEPTA, we have a responsibility to our taxpayers, and I think that would be helpful to bring to this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Please welcome staff writer Jojo Dalwadi, who's here to talk about our next topic, budgetary philosophy.
Good evening and thank you. In June of 2019, the North Penn School District passed its annual budget, which for the 2019-2020 fiscal year was approximately $274 million. The budget included a nearly $6.7 million deficit and a 2.3% tax increase. In February, the preliminary budget planning had projected a nearly $14 million deficit, which was decreased throughout the year as funds were moved to reserves for future long-term projects. The school board considered decreasing the deficit by increasing property taxes, but the Act 1 Index in Pennsylvania... but the Act One Index in Pennsylvania only allows for a 2.3% tax increase annually. The budget agreed on in June has some board members worried that it will lead to using the fund balance, which is money set aside for other projects. The current board has also enacted tax rebates, which can be made available for low-income residents and seniors. The budget this year will be used to fund important projects such as the new full-day kindergarten classes at elementary schools, elementary school renovations, and other renovations made at the secondary level, in addition to the long list of annual expenses involved in operating a school district the size of North Penn. Fiscal responsibility, along with providing the North Penn community with the best of educational resources, is always a central responsibility of a public school board. We will now turn things over to our moderators for a question related to budget philosophy.
Thank you, Jojo. Now on to our next question. If elected to the board, keeping in mind your fiscal responsibilities, talk about your philosophy on the best ways to budget and spend the taxpayers' money coming into the district annually. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have two minutes to respond.
Thank you. You know, here in North Penn, we suffer the same fate as so many other public schools across Pennsylvania. Harrisburg has put the bill on public schools at every turn, and it's extremely difficult for any of us across the state to get out of it. For example, in 2011, the state slashed education funding across the board by about $1 billion. Following that, Pennsylvania stayed the 46th lowest-ranked state in funding its own education since that time. Additionally, teacher pensions are rising as a cost, as an unfunded mandate for our district. Just seven or eight years ago, eight years ago, pardon me, the percentage that North Penn donated towards this pension fund was 8%. Last year, it was about 34%, totaling at least $41 million from the school district from our taxpayers. We have to do something different. This means that we have to pay attention to every dollar. Previous boards have increased taxes more than 3.4% of 2018 in areas around 2009, 2010, above that level, and even into 4.4% at a time when the recession was on the way. We have to be more responsible. One way we've done that is that 10-year facilities plan. While we wait for Harrisburg to catch up, while we advocate for better funding for our schools and our children's education, we also want to explore other ways of funding that doesn't put the burden on taxpayers, particularly the ones at lower incomes, fixed incomes, and retirees. One of the things we're going to do is look into sustainable energy resources to be developed right here on our campus that's going to save us an awful lot of energy. We've already gone through the part where we change the light bulbs and try to stop using energy. We've got to find sustainable resources that are cost-effective for us while we're doing these renovations. We've also extended the tax rebate, one of only two or three across all Pennsylvania, for our fixed income and retired qualifying neighbors. That means that as of this year, you'll have a 30% tax rebate. If you qualify with the state, you qualify with us. This is how you tackle a budget, with the whole community in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. North Penn Views, you have two minutes to respond.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I have been in the conversations about school, school district budget planning in Harrisburg. There are no easy answers to these questions. Yes, it is correct that Pennsylvania, compared to many other states, on a state basis provides a lower source of funding. However, you have to look at the entire picture. Yes, Pennsylvania does depend on its property taxes to provide the basis for school funding. But when you compare that to other states, you have to recognize that most of those other states have lower taxes in other forms. There's been active conversation about alternatives. But to be honest with you, it's like, you know, the devil is in the details, and the details aren't pretty. For instance, there was a look at replacing property tax, at least for the majority, with state income tax and state sales tax. However, if that was done, the tax rate would have to go up to at least 15% on everything. And I mean everything. The reference was cradle to grave, from diapers to coffins. Also, if we reduce property taxes, that benefits the homeowner, but it doesn't necessarily benefit the renter. And to be honest, students, when you get out of college in three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine years, you're probably not going to be immediately buying a house, you're going to be renting. But there's nothing that says that the rents have to be reduced in response to a property tax reduction for commercial property owners. So we need to be fiscally responsible, understand that Harrisburg is not going to save us, recognize that we're going to be having increased funding responsibilities to the pension plan, and move forward with that in mind.
Thank you. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have one additional minute to respond.
When we talk about contributions from Harrisburg, we're talking about the fact that Pennsylvania ranks 47th in the country in terms of state support for public education. We don't need Harrisburg to save us, but we need to do better. We need to be better than that 47th from the bottom. And areas that we can focus on and really partner with our, with our state legislators is looking at the issue of subsidies and support for special education. Let's fund public education, sorry, special education more fully. Then let's look at creative strategies for supporting that, the school district's pension obligations for teachers. But if we focus on those small things, we can make small steps together and begin to move us up from 47th to a little bit higher. And I think that everyone in the state would want that, and I think that everyone in our community would want that. But until then, we recognize that we are relying on our community members for support. And so in that reliance, we're also going to ask for your feedback and for your advice and for your involvement. We want you to be engaged.
Thank you. North Penn Views, you have one additional minute to respond.
Sure. Well, I think, again, everyone is aware of the fact that the largest portion of the budget is tied up with our best asset, which is our educators. And so we definitely need to make sure that we're prioritizing that resource, that we're attracting, retaining the best candidates without limiting our ability to do other things. And so I think as a final comment, we just want to make sure that we're not oversizing the projects that we have, the things like the renovation at NAP or even the stadium. This pulls resources that are valuable, that could be used for other things. And it also saddles us with debt service that, you know, none of us want. So again, we just want to make sure that we're assigning the dollars to the right places with the right priority. And I agree, communication and discussion, dialogue is the way to do that.
I would like to add one thing to what Jen was saying. I just found this article just the other day. Pretty much it said, Pennsylvania's Educational Funding Commission, that was created back in 2012, they came out with a report saying that statewide, there's been a 12% increase of students with emotional disturbances, a 34% increase in students with autism, and a 47% increase in students with other health impairments. At one school district, we won't talk names here, the cost for three, for special students could range from $105,000 annually down to $18,000. Talking about where to spend the money, something like that we need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Now please welcome content editor Angela Tessitore, who will discuss inclusion, class size, and learning environment.
Thank you and good evening. The North Penn School District prides itself on its unified classrooms across all the elementary schools, middle schools, and the high school since the district reevaluated their programs in the 2016-2017 school year to ensure students with disabilities are included in general education. The district includes students in regular education classes to the maximum extent possible. And in regular education classes, but recognizes that some students may need additional support, which they provide. Currently in the school district, 85.8% of special needs students are enrolled in regular educating settings 80% of the day. All elementary and secondary buildings promote inclusive practices in settings of students with IEPs as well. However, some parents are concerned that there are still things that need to be done to ensure that children all have equal opportunities and have the same education as every other student in the district. Other parents have raised concerns about the safety and well-being of their own children in a classroom that includes multiple challenges that result from a fully inclusive environment. Regardless of the stance on this issue, effective inclusive environments continue to be a top priority for school districts today. We will now turn it over to our moderators for our next question on the topic of inclusive education.
Thank you, Angela. And now for our next question. Keeping in mind the virtues and vices of our current inclusive classrooms, tell us about your views on inclusion in education as well as the current manner in which the North Penn School District is implementing inclusive education. North Penn Views, you have two minutes to answer.
So at the heart, inclusion really is about knowing who your students are and being able to put together an individual program for them. Whatever the accommodations might be, it involves time. And teachers only have as much time as they have classroom full of individuals to work with. So I think that when we talk about inclusion, we need to talk about several facts. Number one, the earlier that we can include students in regular activities, the better. Multiple studies have shown that the more that we can matriculate those students, it becomes an active detractor, actually, to bullying later on because people are exposed to people of variety of needs and abilities and don't see them as being different. I have an eight-year-old daughter, and we had a conversation earlier today, and we were talking about, you know, the people that are different in her life. And she's like, Mom, I can't think of anybody who's different. That's a wonderful perspective for a young lady to have. As it pertains to what we're going to do in the classroom, I think, again, it becomes a matter of resources. We have to balance the number of educators and aides we have to the students, and we need to make sure that we are making the reasonable and responsible accommodations so that all students are getting the max out of their education. Sorry, we like to be in check with each other here, so. The main thing that we need is a school climate that's going to promote inclusion. And to make sure that that starts from the grounds up, that involves the students and the educators. And so we need to make sure that the educators are aware of their responsibilities to all of their students, regardless if they are under the umbrella of special education or not.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Breen. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Here in North Penn since 2009, the number of students in special education who have been included in regular education classrooms for more than 80% of the time has risen by 25%. It's not easy to do. Change is very difficult. And a lot of what we're talking about tonight has to do with the types of changes that need to happen after many, many years of basically allowing the ship to kind of list where it goes. This is one of those topics. The state of Pennsylvania has a whole set of laws that are bound with special education and require the district to do certain things. And we're working as best we can in a number of ways. One sign that we see that there's problems is also the climate study we put out, illustrated that 59% of students do not feel welcome, do feel welcome in their schools. That's a higher number, but not nearly where it needs to be. To the point that was spoken by the team to my left, our teachers know how to reach students. We have to empower them with the capability to reach students early on, not just to make them academically ready for the next level. Full-day kindergarten was a massive undertaking that this board took on, which gives our expert teachers that much more time not to meet some state standard, not to do much else really, except their expertise in the classroom, find out who each student is, find out what their needs are, so that a student that enters into North Penn is going to be understood more quickly, is going to be helped in the ways that they need more quickly, and start on their path to success more quickly.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDane. All right, North Penn Views, you have one additional minute.
My daughter came home probably the third week of school in first grade, and she was gleefully telling me about the opportunity to read books with her friend. And she told me about reading alongside of her, holding hands, looking at books. And I said, well, what book did she read? And she goes, well, she can't read. I was like, she can't read? What's wrong? It turns out that it was one of the multiple disability students in her classroom that was in there all the time. And my daughter didn't ever think about it any differently, that was her friend. And I think that that is an incredibly powerful thing, both for the way that the school was set up and run, but also in the way that the teacher approached that and established those rapport early on, because that is going to carry through in the kindness and the thoughtfulness that that classroom and those students had the opportunity to learn. It is critical that we empower our teachers to have the opportunity to build that sort of differentiation and opportunities to bond over the similarities and growth together and create that least restrictive environment for all of our students as much as possible. That's where our community is at its strongest.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have one minute.
As I listen to my colleague across the aisle, that is what this board values. This board values inclusion of all children in the school system so that they develop a sense of belonging and they're prepared for life in the community beyond our schools. This board that I want to be a part of also supports a plan for our facilities that will allow decreased class sizes. We all know that smaller classrooms allow faculty or teachers to get to know the students. We're concerned about this on a higher education side. So why wouldn't we be concerned about this on the K-12 side? We want teachers to know the students, want to know their needs. And what this board is working on is proposing that these smaller class sizes would include everyone. And some of the evidence is they've done things to have inclusion, an inclusion facilitator from the Educational Services Office. They've done some things with Special Olympics so that those students would be included in the culture of the schools. Just yesterday, we had Penny Brook Middle School. They brought back a person to come and speak about bullying, cyberbullying, and youth depression. And we have increased numbers of students who are taking the IEPs. They're having to have a person follow them around in school. Those students are now being put back into the classroom so they have more regular time in the classroom to gain a fuller school experience.
Thank you very much.
Please welcome features editor Hannah Nguyen, who's here to talk about diversity.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. The North Penn School District is represented by multiple cultures, religions, and ethnicities across a broad range of age groups. 33% of North Penn's population is comprised of minority groups. 5% of students qualify for English as a second language, and 16% of students qualify for special education classes. As the district is home to over 12,490 students who speak over 40 languages, our growing size and diversity is a direct reflection of our surrounding communities. Now we turn it to our moderators for the question regarding the diversity in our school district.
Thank you, Hannah. And now for our next question. Please share your thoughts on how best to oversee the school district in a manner in which the schools will reflect the diversity of the community and ensure that the needs and concerns of all groups of people will be met. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have two minutes to respond.
I'm glad you asked that question. Diversity is key. We're discussing diversity on every level of education in our country. Honestly, I'm quite frankly amazed that we're still discussing diversity. But with the numbers that we have in this school district, we can't help but see the need to include everybody in the process. And I think one of the first steps is to change our hiring process. Make sure that we reach out to students of diverse ethnic backgrounds and religious backgrounds. And that is what the school board is doing. We make sure that current teachers are going through a cultural process in which they have workshops and sessions to learn and be trained by educators who are brought from the outside in to ensure that our students, our teachers, actually know how to work with difference. My daughter came here when we came here 23 years ago to the high school, and she was in the North Penn marching band. And she didn't feel welcome, she didn't feel supported, she felt alone. And now with things that this school district is doing to ensure that our teachers reach out to those students, when you see that student by himself or herself, it could be just somebody just saying, you're welcome here. We want you here. And so if that had happened back when my daughter was a student, she would have felt more embraced by this district. And we even have classes that are added to ensure that our students know how to work across the aisles with each other because representation matters. And that's what I like about this school board, look at us. They show that representation matters. Students should be able to... Students should be able to see themselves not only by their teachers in the classroom, but also by their officials on the school board. Everyone's voice needs to be heard at the table, and our school board is doing that. And I'm proud to say that this was, this is happening now, and it should have been happening years before, and it wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you. North Penn Views, you have two minutes to respond.
One of the best parts about living and raising a family here in North Penn is the diversity of our community. It's in the top six percent of the most diverse school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. It weaves a tapestry of different backgrounds, beliefs, abilities, that enhance the way that our students' learning grow. As leaders, it's our responsibility to be prepared to support those diverse needs of our students regardless of backgrounds, interests, capabilities, and ensure that they are able to find success through our educational program. This is much about race and ethnicity as it is about gender, inclusion, and other factors of diversity that make our students special and who they are. I totally agree. For us to be able to support all our students, it's important that we continue to drive the crucial change work that's been started and around how our teachers and leaders are empowered to unlock our students through equity and inclusion. Such reports include things like culturally, cultural context training, restorative discipline practices, unconscious and implicit bias training and identification, increasing culturally relevant curriculum, increasing diversity amongst our teaching staff and our leadership staff, and increasing the inclusion opportunities to empower those leaders and teachers to have a voice in the direction of their schools. It's also critical that we get beyond simply the teaching of heroes and holidays of our diverse cultures, but also digging into the varied strengths that each culture brings to our community. It's not okay that a child doesn't feel embraced when they join the marching band. And it's not okay that our black and brown students are underrepresented in our advanced STEM courses due to tracking and barriers to entry. Our responsibility as a school board is to empower the school administrators to enact changes that break these cycles, to hold them accountable to improving the outcomes on a daily basis for our diverse students across all facets of diversity, and to celebrate the diversity that really makes our community fabulous.
Thank you. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have one minute.
I have twenty years' experience working with very vulnerable immigrant groups, and so embracing diversity is something that I cherish, and I'm so glad that everyone on this stage cherishes. But it is so easy for me to talk as a white woman of privilege about embracing diversity and value. To really address diversity and the changes within our community, we must also have those courageous conversations. We must dig deep and talk about racism. We must dig even deeper and look at issues of representation and work to address achievement gaps. We need to look at how students of color are represented in AP classes. We need to look at how we're disciplining students. Those are the tough questions. You can begin from that place of embracing and cherishing and valuing, and then we have to be able to move on and have those, what I love to determine, what I learned from the cultural cadre of teachers that are meeting, is to have those courageous conversations. And I think it's time.
Can I add that the school board has started that process? Some of those things that my colleague Julianne just mentioned, they sent out a proven climate survey that went out to all students, staff, and parents in the communities to find out exactly what the perspectives and experiences were in the North Penn School District. They established a parent advisory group to serve as a constant point to ensure that open lines of communication remain open so parents can know as well. They also are looking to create a website on the district's pages to updates, to give updates on diversity. We never had that before. I was a parent in the school district. We never received open lines of communication. We didn't know what was being done with diversity. There was a lot of talk about it, but no action. And I'm proud to say that now I see action. In addition to talking the talk, we have to walk the walk. Our students are watching, our neighbors are watching, and diversity is not, is good not only for people of color, but it's also good for the community at large.
Thank you. North Penn Views, you have one minute.
America is, as everyone said, it's a melting pot. And I think this North Penn community is really representative of what America is in general. A stat that I came up with, I found this diversity score, which was point five-eight for the North Penn community. That diversity score, the definition is the chance that two students selected at random would be members of different ethnic groups. Scored from zero to one, the score closer to one indicates a more diverse student body. We came in at five-eight. So, I think the current board, as the previous boards, have done a great job to include everyone in the process. And I just think we just need to continue that process and make it better, to Dan's point, to leave no kid behind.
And if I, if I may build on that, to be honest with you, I'm taking Ms. Lewis Campbell's spot and putting her on steroids. My first, my second job out of college, our senior team, which was all white, said, "The world is changing. We're going to change." And they sent the message down that we would actively recruit, not with quotas, but recruit and involve a broader cross-section of the white, straight white males that we had. He hired a manager of EO and diversity who reported directly to him, and we were successful because it started at the top, and we said, "We're going to do it." We got management, we got supervisors, and we got employees with a broad cultural cross-section.
Thank you. Now, please welcome Content Editor Eric Justberger, who's here to talk about school safety and drug use.
Good evening, audience and candidates. The environment and safety of the North Penn School District is a crucial topic to update and review in order to ensure the safety of our school community. Statistics provided by the National Institute on Drug Abuse estimated that twenty-four-point-six million Americans aged twelve or older, that being roughly nine-point-four percent of the population, had used an illicit drug in the past month. Drug usage in schools across the nation have become an epidemic, and due to North Penn's immense student body, they are not exempt from this issue. Another prevalent concern affecting the population of school districts nationwide, including the North Penn School District, is violence within our schools and endangerment from external sources. Now, we will turn it over to the moderators for our next question tonight regarding the school environment.
Thank you, Eric. And now for our next question. As school safety issues, including everything from school shootings to drug usage, become a growing concern in today's society, please elaborate on what you feel are the necessary steps to ensure the school district's safety, making it the best possible place to learn. North Penn Views, you have two minutes to respond.
So, the thing, the comment I'd like to start with is, I believe in building community through education. And so, first and foremost, we need to make sure that not only the students and the educators and the people that are within the building understand what's needed, but we need to make sure that parents and the people in the community at large are aware of things as well. I think back to a personal experience that I had. My children are young, so I don't know much about drug abuse firsthand, thankfully. And hopefully, I won't get there either. But one thing that was very surprising to me is how innocuous and how masked drug abuse can be these days, and how important it is to be educated about what you need to be looking for. Even something as simple as a device, something that looks like a flash drive for your computer actually may have nicotine or something more illicit in it. And so, again, if you don't know that that exists, then you don't know to prevent it, you don't know to look for it. And if you think that nothing's going on, then you're maybe not even picking up on signs of drug abuse in your child. So, I think that the school and the school district has a responsibility to make sure that we have programs in place, not just for the students, but for the entire community to help build awareness of these things, as well as to make resources available as well. As far as the disciplinary consequences, I think the other thing we need to keep in mind is that disciplinary consequences wind up being net detrimental. And that's another reason why we have to raise awareness, and we need to educate and not just penalize for those instances, especially with drug abuse, but also realizing that a lot of the violence is often connected with that in some way, shape, or form. Punitive policies are not going to be effective, and so, again, we also need to keep in mind that having a student out of school for an out-of-school suspension, that's not going to be the best use of their time. In fact, studies show that they're going to be more likely to conduct additional adverse activities when they're not within the confines of the school building. The last comment I'll make on this is that we know that there's a disproportionate impact on students of color, and that they do tend to be more inherently biased, as we talked about, under diversity. And we need to make sure that that is not the case so that all students are treated equitably.
Thank you. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have two minutes to respond.
Thank you. The statistics that surround drug use amongst the youth of our nation are scary. They're scarier when we look at our own area here right in Montgomery County. The suburbs are unfortunately not immune to these kinds of things, and it's a terrible thing to see across our nation. In 2017, there were over seventeen-hundred nine-one-one calls in Montgomery County alone just due to substance abuse. There were two-hundred-and-forty-five substance abuse overdose deaths in Montgomery County alone in the same year, and the youngest victims of those were high school age. We also have new threats in the form of vaping. In 2017, over thirty percent of students in secondary education admitted that they had tried vaping to replace smoking or as a way to try out nicotine in the past thirty days. Other students also reported using it as a way to obtain marijuana or hash oil. This is real, and it's happening right here in our schools, and we have tackled it. We're doing our best. Right now, our best is this. In the last two years, we've increased our social-emotional support staff in our schools by twenty-two new positions because we know that students who have someone to talk to at their school will not go down these paths, the studies have shown. We have gone well beyond zero tolerance policies. We're making sure that we're getting to students before these phone calls come in. We've also listened to students more, upgraded our safety technology, even something as simple as having our communicative systems in line, spending half a million dollars to make up for so much neglect that had happened over the past decades in our communication systems alone was another cost that we've had to deal with, but have taken those actions now. Our approach to safety is built on relationships and technology and building a community around our students so that we can prevent these things from happening in the first place.
Thank you. North Penn Views, you have one additional minute for a response.
Thank you very much. The topic of drug abuse, the topic of school safety are separate but cannot be separated. I and my family have been personally touched, and I know many, many other families who have been touched by, well, by drug abuse and the effects on the family and the community. This topic is one that's incredibly difficult to discuss. However, I learned long ago that the tip topics that are the most difficult to discuss are probably the ones that most need to be discussed. When looking at these, these problems, we have to say there is no one solution, there is no one silver bullet. You have to look at the cause, and there's, there are many causes, and many times, multiple causes coming together. You have to assess and then determine what is the best intervention. As has been mentioned, in school suspension is probably the worst thing because that contributes to the school-to-jail's pipeline, and we don't want that. We need to be working with successful programs focused on outcomes-based strategies, such as what Judge O'Neill, who does the Montgomery County Drug Court, he asked time and time again, "Why does someone have to come to my court to get the treatment they need?" Those are the kind of programs we need to be looking at, evaluating, and implementing. Thank you.
Thank you. North Penn Neighbors for Progress, you have one additional minute for a response.
So, I'll start with, I think that this board agrees that there needs to be a holistic approach regarding safety. It has to be an open communication with students, with parents. The focus should be on mental health prevention. I know that this board has employed the best experts for training and education for our teachers in the district as well. And the one thing that we talked about was you've got to get your head out of the sand, that you need to look at the data. It's important to understand the data so you know how to move forward, and that in 2018, and the school year 2018 and nineteen, they continue to support mental health needs for the students and for trauma-informed care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, each candidate will be given one minute to deliver a closing statement. We will begin with North Penn Views and Mr. Daniel Bell.
Thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight, and especially to the Crier staff for organizing this event. It's so exciting to see the future leaders of our community here getting involved in local politics. I do hope to see some of you all up here in this debate as candidates in the future. After listening to these discussions today, I'm invigorated at the thought of being part of a team that's passionately looking to ensure that our community is well-served all around with a safe, academic, social, emotional, and fiscally responsible lens. We all have a duty as members of our community to be part of these critical discussions. I'm confident that if our constituents give me the opportunity, I'll bring my expertise and experience as a seasoned educational leader to the board to ensure that educational excellence and financial sustainability for our school district is here for decades to come. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Breen.
Thank you, Alexis. And again, I'd like to express my thanks to the Knight Crier team, North Penn TV, and all the other individuals who helped to make this evening's town hall come together. It's been my privilege to be here, and I would just like to say again, I think that everybody that's up here, regardless of party, ultimately is just looking to do what's in the best interest of the community. There's tens of thousands of people that live in the district, and there's six candidates on each side running in this particular cycle. All of us are just looking to provide open dialogue, a collaborative approach, regardless of who's voted this season. It's going to be, you know, a mixed board. And we want to synthesize the thinking from the diverse approaches and put it together in a way that's going to best benefit the community at large, but in particular, the students who will be the future of this same community. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Breen. Mr. David Kuski.
I think we probably could have continued this conversation for another two to three hours. I think that's how important these topics are to all of us here on stage and out in the audience. Again, I want a big shout out to the Knight Crier. You guys did a fantastic job. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be up here and to talk to everyone this evening. While I've been campaigning over the last few months, we're knocking on doors and talking with folks. Few people have asked me, "What makes a good school board member, and why should I choose you?" I took those questions to heart, and this is what I came up with. Great school board members have a clear vision for the district. Great school board members adopt fiscally sound budgets. Great school board members focus on what is best for the students and making education number-one priority. Great school board members are transparent and openly communicate their actions to the community. And most importantly, great school board members work as a team. They work well together and are respectful to the others on the board, the school district administration, the teachers, and the community. As a school board candidate, I promise to you that I will use these as guiding principles to be a great school board member. I'm truly humbled that I'm asking for your support tonight. Please come out on Election Day and vote for the North Penn Views team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuski. Mr. Ned Smith.
Thank you. I'm running for the North Penn School Board to fight for great schools while keeping taxes in line. I ask that North Penn voters vote for the North Penn Views ticket to assure good stewardship and an outstanding education with affordable costs. In closing, I want to thank the moderators and the students for sponsoring this event. This was a great opportunity to bring together differing views and perspectives and help voters decide who they think will be best able to strike a very delicate, and it will be delicate, balance of meeting the goal of educational excellence at a price that won't burden the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you to the North Penn Views team for being here tonight. Now, we'll continue with North Penn Neighbors for Progress and Ms. Julianne Ramich.
I want to also thank the students. Your questions were really spot-on and really show that you've done the research, and you're really connected back to, I think, what the questions in the community that we're hearing from when we're talking to our neighbors. So, thank you all. I also want to thank everyone who's watching from home, who did not brave the rain to come out. It was a tough night to come out, but we're so grateful for all of you who came and all of those of you who are watching. I think I've been really inspired- I think I've been really inspired this evening that regardless of which side of the stage that we're sitting on, that there's more common ground that we have. There's more opportunity for us to work together, and I think that that really shows that our community is in line with what we need for our district. We agree that the issue of diversity and supporting increase in representation and making sure that students are achieving things in an equal manner is important, and that we want to see our facilities improved and that we want to focus on school safety. But what I'm most proud about is working with this team. If we are elected as a slate of candidates, we, for the first time in North Penn's history, will be a female-majority board, and the first time that we've elected women of color. And that, to me, where we are right now in two thousand nineteen is so critically important to see us through.
Thank you, Ms. Romich. Ms. Kathy Wesley.
That was well said, but, not but, and thank you for that. So I'll continue to echo what Julianne just said. First, though, I'd like to thank the entire student team, regardless of your role and what you did this evening. I hope you all are proud of yourself because you did a great job. I've never been part of anything like this. You're all very professional. You're articulate, and I'm very impressed. So congratulations to you all. Regarding this specific team up here, I'll echo what Julianne said. It is a diverse group. It's multifaceted, and we've talked often about on this team about bringing the students into the twenty-first century. And the twenty-first century is a diverse organization. It's a microcosm of a whole bunch of different people with different cultures, interests, and priorities. And this team brings that to that slate. So I would welcome the opportunity to be part of that team. I bring a technical, specifically, I bring a real technical role to it, while others bring the educational side to it. So I think it's a strong slate, and we would do a good job for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Ms. Wanda Lewis Campbell.
First, I'd like to also thank you all, North Penn Knights Crier, for this debate tonight. I think you did an excellent job. I remember walking in the door. I was welcomed by the young men outside and brought in, escorted in, to where I needed to be, and I saw diversity every step of the way. So I think you ought to be proud of that. Working with students over twenty-two, over twenty-plus years, twenty-two years at Temple University, that student development, that leadership training, it's evident in those that we've seen here tonight, and I want to commend you all. As I thought about it when I decided to run for North Penn School Board, I'm vested in the community. I've been here for twenty-three years. I didn't just start attending school board meetings because I decided to run. I've attended those meetings in the past, and what I'm seeing now excites me. It energizes me, and I wish my children had benefited from what I'm seeing now. And we've moved from being a melting pot. We're what I call a good salad. In a good salad, you need all kinds. You need lettuce, tomatoes, onions, croutons, so on and so forth. And we need to celebrate what you bring that's unique to the table, and this board is doing that. I want to ensure that students can be their best selves. I want to advocate for parents and the other stakeholders to make sure their voices are heard and represented. I don't just want to be invited to the party. I want to be asked to dance, and that's what's important to me about being a part of this school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis Campbell. Mr. Timothy McBane.
Thank you very much again. You guys do a great job, every single time. I also want to thank the North Penn Views team. They're passionate about education, and we're glad that you're our neighbors. I think the last thing I just want to say on behalf of the team tonight is, you look across our table here, you're going to see people who go to work in North Penn, drive on the streets and fight traffic here with you in North Penn, try to get home in time to pick up the kids from school, figure out who's going to pack lunches, who's going to get the clothes out for the next day. The kids of the candidates here with me range from kindergarten on through middle schools to the high school, senior year. And we work very hard. We work very hard because we know the one thing we can't do is let our students fall between the cracks. And this team is absolutely committed to tackling all these issues the right way, as fast as we can, but the right way. And if you can take fifteen minutes on November fifth to come out and support this progress, we would really appreciate your help, and we'd love to see you come out to some more meetings and hear what we have to say when we're not up on a stage and have your help building this community even further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McBane, and thank you to North Penn Neighbors for Progress. On behalf of the Knight Crier, I'd like to thank the candidates for your participation and enthusiasm. We sincerely appreciate your willingness to speak honestly with the community, and we wish you all the best of luck this November. A big thank you is also in order for NPTV for working so hard to tape and stream this event, as well as to Mr. Clank and the talented students who performed our national anthem. Thank you also to Dr. Dietrich and the North Penn School District Administration and Facility Staff. Without your support, this event never would have been possible, and we appreciate everything you do for us. Finally, I want to thank all of you, members of the North Penn community, for showing up and tuning in and paying attention to local politics. You are the heart, soul, and future of this district, and your voice can truly make a difference. To find your polling station, go to montcopa.org/voterservices. Once again, I am Alexis Bamford, signing off with my co-moderators Skylar Simpson and Simeon Barrett. Have a great night, everyone, and remember to vote on November fifth. Thank you.